Live on YouTube, so you can re-adjourn the meeting or re-do what you need to do.
Okay, um, so now we're on number six update on cable negotiations.
Got unmuted myself here.
I actually do have Attorney Hewig on the line. I just bring him into the meeting here.
I can give you an overview. I brought Bill in for the last couple of meetings. We had had like probably six or seven meetings and I felt that we needed to sort of move this along because there is an October timeline in terms of actually having a signed contract, but it's in force regardless, as well as the, as long as the two parties are continuing to bargain in good faith. So even if you didn't get it settled until December, January, February, as long as people continue to bargain, I'd like to get it resolved before I leave. So the situation is this, I have, we originally proposed to the cable company, let me get this down so I can take a look at it. We had, we had proposed to increase the franchise fee to one to two percent. That's a subscriber paid fee. It's used basically to cover the videographer, operating expenses, equipment facilities as it relates to access to programming. We had requested three standard channels, standard deaf channels and one, at least one high deaf channel. We had requested a senior discount and we hoped to get five dollars. We had put in, when we originally proposed it to the board regarding capital funding, we had proposed 150, the board recommended that we go to 250. The purpose to be either to outfit a new studio, do something in co-op with the regional school or use those fees to, or use that money to equip our own studio or, and/or access Lake Cam or Middle Cam. We had asked for an electronic program guide. We asked for free cable drops. There's an outstanding infrastructure issue down in Bay Shores. We included that although really isn't a bargaining issue. And then the term we had asked for was five years. We counted, they counted that thing that they would, they would be in favor of giving us an increase in the franchise fee from currently one percent to three percent. However, they, on the the three standard deaf, they said okay with that. One high deaf, they said okay to that. Both of those are out in time because they, that's not a capacity they have in terms of the ability to immediately put them online. In fact, we were told the HD channels probably three years out. Senior discount, they said that generally it's a side letter that's not included as part of the contract. It's generally in the amount of two dollars, a two dollar reduction in the bill for seniors. They also made note of the fact that if they're in a classified group, there is a special rate that's available. If they meet certain income guidelines, it's a reduced rate for internet and for cable. Capital funding, they came back and they had offered $100,000 instead of 250. They, basically what they did is they gave us an increase from our, the two percent we had requested to three percent and then reduced the capital from 150 to 100. In the, in the paper review of the numbers, it does show that we would be getting more with the three percent and the 100,000. We were told by council as well, as information we have gathered that Comcast really doesn't want to be giving capital funding requests and the fact that they even offered $100,000 was kind of a surprise to everybody that we talked to. Basically, the reason we wanted it front-loaded onto capital funding was that that wasn't tied to the subscriber base. So if there was a reduction in the subscriber base over a period of time, over the 10-year period of time, that we would still get the 25,000 a year. They preferred to do it as a franchise fee, which means they're basically even in terms of the total cost. It may be a little bit more with the three percent, but there's also the net possibility of a reduction if subscribers start moving to cut the cable or cut the cord or if an alternative system comes in such as 5G or some, you know, other programming option that we haven't are currently aware of. The electronic program guide, they're not, they can't do that because it affects multiple systems. Free cable drops, they don't do that anymore. And they definitely want the 10 years. They don't feel that the five-year contract is sufficient for their needs. So their final offer at this point is three percent, $100,000 in capital and the items that I mentioned. I don't know if Bill wants to add anything to that.
What I would add is that it certainly is a short-term benefit because we end up getting more on an annual basis than we would under the earlier negotiated amounts. That is the 2.5% of the 2% going up to 3%. Over 2% gives us another $28,000 a year in year one. And then if subscribership goes down, you can project that out. You can see that in year two, you get a little less, year three, a little less, year four, a little less. So you end up getting a lot more upfront anyway. And who knows how long subscribership will go down or how far down it'll go. It seems to me to be a benefit to do it this way, even though we didn't get the solid number of capital that we want. We still can take money from the three percent in excess of our annual operating needs and apply that to capital needs. There's no reason why you can't do that. So it looks to me like the three percent and the $100,000 is actually a pretty good deal when you think about it in terms of getting that extra money upfront now when we need it. And that's what I would add, David.
That's basically where we're at. Unfortunately, cable negotiations aren't exempt under executive session rules, so they can watch this video or they can watch other videos, you know, on the cable. The, they can watch the cable committee meetings and know exactly what we're talking about.
So what are you asking the board? Do you want?
I just wanted to let the board know where, wanted to know where you, we were at. So if and when we bring something back, we could be really close to finishing this whole thing off. If we bring it back, that there's no surprises and that you say, all right, well, geez, I thought we agreed to 250 and now we're talking 100. I thought we agreed to 2%, now we're talking 3%. I thought we said we're going to get this or that. And this is where we're at. I'm giving you a snapshot of the current negotiations. Once again, they can watch this video on YouTube and know everything we're talking about, but that's where we're at.
Thank you. I truly appreciate it. George, Trevor, any questions?
No.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Bye. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, um, chapter 21, right of first refusal for Zero Brayley Road and 75 Quantapog Road. The Conservation Commission voted not to exercise their right of first refusal to purchase a property at 76 Quantapog or portions of properties at 45 and 63 Brayley, all of which are being removed for, from chapter 61 Forest Street Program. Do you have a motion to vote for the board to do the same?
Motion granted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
Yes. Okay, next, Declaration of Filing Cabinets SR Plus. David?
We have, when we cleaned out the map room, we cleaned out several file cabinets. We don't want to just throw them in the basement because they'll just, can't stay down there and never, you know. A couple of the employees have asked if they could buy them. There is a provision in the general laws that lets us do that. So my recommendation would be for the board to declare the surplus property. And because it's less than 200, we have $500, consider it a private sale rather than an auction and make them available to the employees as well as the public if somebody wants to purchase one.
Okay, and we're sure that none of these have the same issues as the other filing cabinet, correct?
No, they're not.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain it. Go ahead, George.
I just wonder what the other issues were.
We had a cabinet, we had to have removed, I guess that's the it required it to be removed by a professional moving company.
Okay.
And a, and a professionally, I guess.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to declare the filing cabinet surplus.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
Yes. Okay, MOA, David Demarche.
This is about the 2%. We had discussed that as having it go back retroactive to July 1st. It was a cost of living increase that everybody was getting and is part of the budget package. I agreed as well as another department had not increased it. Now that we're through that process, I would like to request that I get that 2%.
Motion made.
Do you have a second? David, was this in your original contract? I can't remember.
It wasn't a performance-based thing. It was as a cost.
But it was, it was for the, the other part, right?
The, I, I had gotten the, the same increase as everybody else the previous year and, and I got it last year and this is the same situation as last year.
Okay, um, Trevor, do you have anything? Is Trevor there?
All right, yeah, sorry. I was muted. My bad. So what are we looking, so yeah, I'm, I'm okay with all this.
All right.
So motion was made, I think.
Yeah, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstaying. Got it.
All right, so Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
I'm abstaining. Okay, next, ambulance abatements. Contractual allowance for the month of August 2020 has to be made as specified from ComStar in the aggregate amount of $86,615.50. Write-offs for the month of August 2020 to be made specified in the schedule from ComStar in aggregate amount of $32,730.80 for a total allowances and write-offs of $119,346.30, 30 cents.
Do we, do we have the number, the total number collected? In that at all?
That would be something we could get you.
Okay.
I don't have it. I don't have it.
Yeah, I'd just like to know what the revenue is for the ambulances. It used to be about 500,000 a year. Like to know if we're still maintaining that.
Okay, good question. Do I have a motion and a second on this?
Motion granted.
Aye.
Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
Yes. Okay, agreement with JJ Manning Auctioneers for the auction of former Freetown Screw property parcel 245-090. David?
As you're aware, we are in the process of going to sell the Freetown Screw property. We have an auctioneer that's been used for all of our tax title properties in the past, JJ Manning. Basically, they do all the advertising as well as conduct the auction. It's going to be an absolute auction. It's, which means it's going to sell for whatever the highest prices. The auctioneer gets a 10% premium for conducting the auction and for putting all the notices out to prospective buyers, including advertising, direct mail, mail, press releases, signage, et cetera.
David, we can barely hear you. Can you repeat this?
Oh, all right, okay. I wonder what happened there. All right. Basically, this is a standard agreement that we've used in the past for tax title properties. JJ Manning is going to conduct the auction for the sale of the Freetown Screw property. It, it doesn't, it's, it's, the premium is 10% based upon the sale price. Dated the auction as it currently stands is October 15th. It's going to be an absolute auction where we are selling the land to the bidder at the highest price that we receive. The auctioneer is going to be responsible for all the auction advertising such as newspaper advertising, listing, direct mail, press releases, signage, et cetera. You know, there's a requirement that each individual wants to bid, has to have a $5,000 check. This is a standard agreement that we've used in the past, same company. It just is used for previous tax title name.
David, I just have a question. It says on number two, it says, to the highest bidder regardless of price, do we have a like a start-off point or, or?
No, it's an absolute auction, whoever bids. And the reason it's an absolute auction is because there are unknown environmental issues there that we, you know, I think if you set a set price, I'm not sure if it would be met and I don't know how you establish a baseline on how much a, a property would bring in the market knowing that there are potential issues associated with the sale of that property.
All right, so, but we do have to sort of balance that out with what we need to pay back to.
There's no payback. All we got to do is, the, the key in, in this situation is making the effort to sell this parcel of land and fulfilling our responsibility to, to release us from the $465,000.
All right, that's, that's the key. Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain, does anybody have any questions, Trevor?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go forward with the agreement with JJ Manning and sign it.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
Yes. The dogs are going to stop barking, so I apologize ahead of time. Okay, um, so I'll move on to change orders, 17 through 20 for the Freetown Police Station. Change order number 44, the TEP panel for the feed for 9/11. That was just a small amount of $384.96. Change order number 47, evidence locker reorder, there was something wrong with those. There was an increased cost of $1,488 or $482.41. PCO number 52, COVID-related, $25,200. I am happy to report that these costs are winding down now. And I'll talk a little bit about that after we finish this. And PCO number 53, exterior outside sign, it's the sign that we're going to put in the front of the police station. At first, it was going to be like, it just a, one that was not permanent, this sign will be permanent. And that is the, in the amount of $4,389.05. Do you have a motion to approve those following change orders?
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
Yes, so when we first started doing the police station, we had a goal of making sure that the town would get back some money out of the contingency. So, but this COVID thing really hit us hard. It actually is taking over $250,000 of our contingency at this point. I'm just hoping, David, and I'm just wondering, are we still moving forward with submitting those and have we had any feedback yet?
We had, we submitted as part of the initial requisition. We haven't filed a second requisition yet. I know other communities are looking at doing the same. We have not heard back as to whether or not the feds are going to allow those costs.
Okay.
We hoping that there are, they will.
Okay, do we have a deadline of when the second submission is?
I, I have not heard anything from the fire chief submission of a second requisition, so.
Okay, so how?
I can follow up on that.
Okay, so how much money have we?
I want to say we drew down, we drew down 176,000, some of which was related to the school to, for the phone books. There was a whole list of things that we submitted. The COVID costs were part of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how much we have submitted on behalf of the police station, so.
I can find that out.
Okay.
I don't have that number.
All right, anybody have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, next, request to use the COA pavilion by the building commissioner for a district meeting on 9:30 and 10:28. He's already actually talked to the COA and I guess they're fine with it. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Nope.
Do you have a motion?
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next.
Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
Yes, next, award bid and contract implementation for fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2023 for the re-evaluation program. Did everybody have a chance to look that over?
I have, I had the Board of Assessors meeting tonight. Mike was going to bring this to their attention because I wanted to make sure they were okay with it. We advertised it in accordance with procurement practices and we only received the one bid from Capinos. I did not get a text from Mike saying that they have approved it, but if the board wanted to move that it be approved pending approval or review by the Board of Assessors, that might be helpful. That way at least it's done.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to award the contract to, I can't remember, I don't have the name in front of me. Capinos. Pending a positive approval from the Board of Assessors.
That's the CTA evaluation group.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second?
Second, but I'd like to ask a question after we take the vote.
Okay, uh, do you sure you want to wait or do you want it part?
It won't affect the vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
Yes. Go ahead, George.
Are we going to inspect stop and shop, or not inspected, the wrong word, but for their their taxable private, personal property? There is a lot of money involved with that. And will these people go in there and do an inventory of taxable equipment and furniture and all of that?
That would be a Board of Assessors question. I don't know the answer.
They have a form of list. They, every year, a business is required to submit a list of all the capital equipment to establish a valuation for that. So that's, that is an assessors question, but that's how they do it.
Right, but I, I'm not sure if this is the first year for personal property or if last year was, and I'm wondering if we did an audit. I understand that they give us the list, but do we audit that?
Yeah, that would be, I can, I can put that down as a task and ask the assessors to give me an answer.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hey, town administrators, oh no, sorry, um, award bid for cleaning services for the new police station.
Okay.
That one actually came off the agenda.
I just wanted to get, we got two bids and I, the police chief, I was unable to get in touch with them today. So we, I would like to just hold off on that, but it's not essential that we award the contract at this meeting because it's going to be a while before we're actually in the building and going to need those services. So we have a little time there, but we do have two bids.
Okay, that's good. All right, um, hold on, I gotta put the dog down. Okay.
Don't say down.
That was the wrong thing to say right there. Physically down.
Yeah, sorry.
The ASPCA is going to be contacting us.
He was sitting on the side of me. That's the only way I could keep him quiet, so I had to put him on the floor. I was putting the dog on the floor.
There you go.
Okay.
There we go. That was, that's much better.
Whoa, I didn't even pick up on that.
We saved his life.
Oh gosh, I'm embarrassed. Oh, anyway, next, minutes from 9:8 and 9:9. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion granted.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Salkman Matthews?
Yes.
Salkman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Salkman Pacheco.
Yes. Okay, town administrators report.
I only have two items. One is to let the board know that we, our new custodian in town office and is going to be starting on the 23rd. A little bit ahead of schedule, so that's a good thing. And Jeff's going to take him around and show him, you know, all the buildings and what's expected of him in each of the buildings. He's going to do that, I believe, on Wednesday. The other question I just have for the board, and we never really resolved it, we agreed that we weren't going to have the special town meeting indoors. We never resolved whether we were going to do it as a drive-in style town meeting or whether we were going to do it on the football field like we had done for the annual town meeting. If you want to hold off on that for Friday and have a vote on it, I don't know, it wasn't on the agenda, but you called the meeting, you just haven't called the location. And from a cleaning perspective, we need at least a couple of weeks to be able to figure out how we're going to conduct both of those meetings. Given, you know, what choice the board makes.
Warren is noted that it's being, it's taking place at Uponacoot High School, so if you guys want to take that into consideration.
The location is defined, it's just the, the way we're going to.
Right, it's the method that we're looking, we're guiding some.
Um, it's getting cold out. I mean, it's, I don't know about you guys, but it's cooled out, so I, I don't have a preference one way or the other myself. Does anybody else?
No, I mean, I think it'd probably be logistically easier to do it just in the football fields like we did.
Actually, actually, I would say logistically, it's probably easier to do the, the drive-in.
A drive-in, okay. Well, then, yeah, I mean, I defer to your, you know, opinion on this because I'll be sitting up there anyways. It doesn't really bother me.
People are going to have the heat on instead of the AC like in, in August, you know.
Yeah.
I think we're going to have to bring one of those heaters, you know, those gas heaters, the stand-up ones.
Absolutely, yep. Those are great.
It would be. All right, um, so do you, do you want to hold off on that or, I mean, I think, George, do you have any preference?
No, I don't. Whatever you guys want.
I just want to be all planned because there's a whole bunch of moving, not major moving pieces, but there's a whole bunch of moving pieces that have to be coordinated.
So I, I guess general consensus would be in the Uponacoot parking lot, but I would defer to David, Tim, Mike and Jackie to just, you know, make sure all those people are on board with that before we move forward.
Sounds good.
Okay, next thing, David?
I, I think he said that was it, but it.
I heard it very faintly.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought he had two things. All right. Police station update. Well, progress is, I mean, we just went for a walk-through. The building is incredible. We're starting to work on an opening plan here. And also ribbon cutting sort of. We are limited to the 50, so I think some of the things that we were talking about are just, you know, the Board of Selectmen, at this point, the Board of Selectmen and the Police Department, obviously, Town Administrator, and then doing something in the spring, but also doing a And then doing something in the spring, but also doing a video walkthrough, so people can actually see what it looks like. Because we're not going to be able to do an open house till maybe the spring, so we're working on that, hopefully that'll be ironed out. And I can have some more details for you guys.
Sounds good.
All right, um, I will turn it over to the board of health.
Okay, security cameras. I, I have one recommendation, it's Google Nest cameras. We can get them for about five hundred dollars for two of them. I'm not sure if we need more than that, they come and you can get two or four, basically is how it comes. But for two of them, it's five hundred and change. I think the installation doesn't require an electrician. It does not have a recorder on site, it goes into the clouds, which is the preferal mat, the preferred method to me. And there will be a cloud charge annually, depending on the number of cameras, between hundred to two hundred dollars a year. But it'll do the job. Again, very simple, be able to access the recordings remotely with your phone. So whoever we designate to have access to that. That can be done, the town administrator, board of health officer, or whoever. So on that, that, that is basically my recommendation on that. So we, we need, I, I would ask for a budget of twelve hundred dollars to get four cameras. And, and then going forward, maybe two hundred dollars a year for the storage.
I, I, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion granted.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Slack and Matthews.
Yes.
Slack and Pacheco.
Yes.
And Slack and Grunwald.
Yes.
So George, I just have a question, can we put three at the transfer station and put one above the black box at town hall? Will that all work the same, or do they all have to be in the same location?
I don't have the answer to that, but I will get it for you.
Okay, all right, because I think that, I, I do think we need one on town hall above that black box, that mailbox. So if we could do three at the transfer and one over there, I'm all in favor for that, if we can, if not, that's fine.
You know what we could do, Lisa, is let me order two packages, so it's four cameras. And put two at the transfer station, two at the town hall, see how it works, we're not talking about a lot of money.
Right.
And, you know, six months down the road, we can review and do whatever.
That sounds like a great plan, I'm, that's awesome, okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll turn it over to personnel, thank you so much, George, for doing that, I know it's not.
Oh, just to let you know, I will be meeting with Vicky on Wednesday and to go over some of these issues. And we'll go from there. Also, it's not on the agenda. But I just wanted to review with you guys again, the cash issue, if it's appropriate, because it's not on the agenda.
Do you want to put it on the agenda? Why don't you meet with Vicky on Wednesday and we'll put it on for the next meeting?
Okay.
Okay, so you can review things with her and then bring it forward to, on the next meeting, all right, Tim? Okay, perfect, all right, I'll turn it over to personnel.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to bring up, just for discussion, whether we'd like to go forward with a wage of classification study. I personally think that this could be good for the town, especially with all the, you know, the turnover we've had recently. And we know all the institutional knowledge we will be losing in the future. It might be good to kind of take an inventory of where we stand now and who does what. And then that will allow, you know, the new people that come in to kind of use that as a base level to establish how we're going to, the structure will be going forward. Just want to throw that out there and see what the rest of the board has to say about that.
I personally, Trevor, I think that's a great idea. And I don't know if it's appropriate with this particular study, but I, I would like to add to that. What our chain of command is. Because I, I think there's some confusion, who is in charge of what, who, who's responsible for what, you know. So the chain of command might be very good to have it written up and diagrammed. If you, you know, think that it's appropriate.
So I, I see this as something we probably have to go up either to bid for, or at least like an RFP or something. David, can you speak to that, or how do we go for, I, I don't think, I don't know if we have to make a vote today on whether we're going to do it or not. But I just like to entertain the idea of it and maybe get the ball rolling, any vote I can take on that.
I mean, we, we should be able to do that internally, to tell you the truth, I don't think that necessarily needs a consultant.
See, I don't know, George, I might disagree, I think that it might be good for us to have a kind of a third party, you know, take a look.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't be against it, Trevor, don't get it wrong.
And Lisa, yeah.
Thank you, um, so I urged you guys to go talk to people at town hall. I don't know if you guys have had the opportunity to do so, I will tell you that. Everybody that I've spoken to at town hall has nothing to do with money, has nothing to do with money, has everything to do with workload, leadership. Accountability and. Equity, and I don't mean monetary equity, I mean equity as in what's good for one person is good for everybody. So I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, I'm not going to do that, I'm going to once again urge you. To go talk to people at town hall, and again, I will tell you, it has nothing to do with money. And that's just my two cents.
And I, no, I think that makes sense, Lisa, I, I agree with you, from what I've, I've, I have talked to some, some people at town hall and I've had similar. I, I think money's a part of it, I, I think money's always a part of everything, a little bit, but I, I do agree there's other issues, like workload. That's why I want to quantify that workload is not being evenly distributed, right? And I think that doing this type of study might help us kind of, you know, get that down on paper and, and be able to look at it and say, you know, one person has. You know, a hundred and forty percent of their, of what their average workload would be, whereas another person might have less, you know, and. So that's kind of where, I'm trying, I'm just trying to think of a practical way for us to kind of quantify the situation.
So I'm just wondering, do you know, Tim or David, have the job descriptions that we talked about the last time gone out to all, to everybody? And have they had a chance to add to it, take away from it, and give it back to the board?
Everyone is, has in the department heads or to the board members?
No, so the last time we were together, we talked about giving back the job descriptions to, like, let's just say. The board of health agent, and then we asked for that person to review it, to look as to if he did more than what is, or him or her. More than what's on that job description, or is it less than what's on that job description? Same thing with, say, the town accountant, same thing with the building inspector. You know, just job descriptions in general. I have a feeling people are doing more than their job description, and I think that things should be taken away and perhaps. Divided out accordingly.
Like reallocated.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, Lisa. Now, also as part of this. Last year, I got ahold of a personnel handbook that we have, and I found a lot of. Things that probably should be changed, and I, I gave the handbook back, and I, I don't have a copy of it anymore. But Trevor, I think if you review that, we can put that on the list of things to discuss and look at. But there were things there that I think could be greatly improved.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we basically took another town's handbook and just used it. There were still references in, in our book that referred to another town, so.
And didn't make any sense for our town, I think, I think, you know, a lot of what I've heard is that. We're treating, and, and I get, I get part of it, that we're treating town hall as if it were a Fortune five hundred company. And it's not, it's a town hall, it's about seeing people, talking to people. It's about having citizens being able to come in and, and talk to whomever, whether it be the town clerk, because they have a question. Or the, you know, the, the assessors, if they have a question, I think we're getting away from what town hall really is supposed to be about. And the camaraderie within town hall and the service that we give to, to the people. And I just, I just don't want to get away from that, I, I think that that's really important, I think that people need to be heard. And I think that that's another thing that I found out, that people are not heard, or asked how they feel.
When you say people, you're talking about our employees? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I would change one thing in what you said. A town hall is, in my opinion at least, not too different than running a company. The difference is, with a company, you have a profit motive. But the bottom line is, you have to have customer service, and that's really what town hall is all about. Customer service to, you know, the citizens of Free Town. So having said that.
So.
So, sorry, Trevor.
Yeah.
Can we just get everybody's, can we move forward with at least having them do the job descriptions, review it, and then bring it back to the board?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, I think that's a great first step in the right direction, and then we can see how that goes, and then make a, assess, you know, make a decision from there. I'm, I'm, it sounds good to me.
I actually just got a message from Ally, most of the department heads have received them. Yeah, most of them, except for the treasurer is the only one that hasn't received it yet.
All right, can we put it, Trevor, do you want to put a deadline on it? Do you want to offer a deadline to have them back to us? So maybe we can review them over this next week and have, and like, talk about it again at our next meeting?
Yes, that makes sense, so would our next meeting be, I mean, we'd want to do it obviously at a regular board of selectman meeting, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Uh, so the next one is.
October.
So, yes, I'll make a motion.
No, I'll make the motion for you, you're the chair, I'll make a motion that we ask the department heads to have that back for us by. By the end of this next upcoming week, and that we have the ability to talk about this at our next meeting on ten-five.
And can we find that personnel handbook also?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Slack and Grunwald.
Yes.
Slack and Pacheco.
Yes.
Slack and Matthews.
Yes.
All right.
So next, we need to advertise for the executive assistant slash HR position, position. I think this needs to be done as soon as possible. I don't, I mean, I, I know there's some things up in the air a little bit around this, but. I guess, well, first, we talk about how, how do we approach this? I mean, do we post the job description as it is, or?
So, let's see, today is.
Could we maybe hold, hold on this item until Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense, yep.
Perfect, that's what I was going to say too, great.
Yep, all right, so next is establishing a point, Free Town Vocational Education Exploratory Committee. So I will have to lean on you guys to help me who we should appoint to this, I think.
So, in, in talking to the superintendent of schools, this really is a joint decision, because it's one about. And as much as it is about how much it's going to cost the town to do something like this, so it should be a joint endeavor. Between the town administrator, the superintendent of schools, two of the Free Town only. School committee members and one of the board of selectmen. I would like to be considered, but if somebody else wants it, I totally understand.
Nope, so I'll, can I make a motion to go forward with that approach?
No, I'll make the motion.
Okay, sorry. You messing this up today, it's been a long day.
It really has been a long day, and I can't even see you.
Yeah, sorry.
It's not going to be acceptable next meeting, Trevor.
All right, don't worry, I'll be nice and shaven, ready to go.
All right.
I think, George, did you second that?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay.
I did, and I do now.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Slack and Grunwald.
Yes.
Slack and Pacheco.
Yes.
And Slack and Matthews.
Yes. So the next is appointment of the new board of health agent, do we have that?
No, can I make a few comments on this?
I don't think we do, yep.
We, we had some interviews scheduled for today, as you might know, but.
Yeah, I saw that.
Two of the three candidates decided not to apply. So we didn't think, when I say we, David and I spoke, and we didn't think we should go forward with only one applicant. So we're going to reschedule and re-advertise, isn't that correct, David, we're going to re-advertise? David? Can David lead us?
Still see him there.
No, with us, but I think he might be having the microphone issues again.
Okay, all right, well, let me continue, so we decided that we should re-advertise. But because we're in a bind right now without an agent. We'd like to appoint on a temporary basis. Two, three months, the woman that did come in, she's very well qualified, she's doing work for us now. That, that is Mary Frey, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it right, Freyra Kellogg. Like I said, she's already doing work for us on an interim basis. And I would recommend that we make her a temporary offer for sixty or ninety days. Till we can do a proper search and interview, and that'll also give us a chance to see what she can do. Because she's a, looks like a very good candidate, but it's a little early to tell. So that, anyways, that's my recommendation, that we give her, let's say, a ninety-day temporary position, if she accepts it.
Has there been any consideration to reaching out to either Berkeley or Lakeville to see if they would want to regionalize the board of health agent?
No, but I think that's a great idea, in that ninety-day interim, that's something we could do.
I, can you hear me or not?
Barely, barely, David, you're like. Little.
Anyway, I, I did reach out to Maureen Candido today about our situation. Regarding our, the need for a board of health agents on an interim basis. Or, you know, just trying to give the board more choices, if that's what they wanted to do, rather than one end of. I, I don't have any preference, I'm not, I know that we did meet with her briefly, just to explain the fact. That we only had one, one applicant, and that we, we didn't feel that the board would feel that that was an acceptable. And that we were going to re-advertise the position, we told her there would be no guarantee that she would get the position. But that, you know, we would entertain that whole, the possibility of an appointment as an interim. Doesn't necessarily mean that the board can't choose to go in another direction, if they so desire and go to Lakeville or Dyton or wherever. You know, I just need direction, I know that right now, we have a problem, and if we don't appoint an interim tonight. That the board should at a minimum authorize George to be able to sign documents. The situation is this, the person who's doing the backfill right now won't sign off on the documents. She'll do the surveys, she'll do the septic. Inspection, she'll, you know, she'll do the perk test, but she is not going to sign off because she is not an interim board of health agent. So if, if she continues to do the backfill work, then we need somebody to sign off on the documents, and that would have to be George as the chair. Of the board of health.
All right. My take on this is, that's a possibility, but I'm really not crazy. Am I getting an echo? Okay, I'm not too crazy about signing off on things that I'm really not qualified to sign off on.
And I totally understand that.
But before we go. But, uh, before we go, go on with, on this vein, I, I'd just like to hear back from the board to see how you feel about bringing this in, this person in on a, say, three month basis till we can regroup and not be under duress, which we are now. And then we can look at what you're suggesting, Lisa. Doing something with Lakeville or Berkeley. I think those are great ideas. I suggested that years ago that we work with, with, with our neighbors. So that's where I would go. So, uh, what I'd like is a motion to, uh, bring this, uh, uh, what's her name? Um, yeah. Uh, bring her in, uh, on a, for a period of time, 90 days, if you think that's good. Or if you have another number in mind, that's okay too. So what do you think?
Uh, I'll, I'll grant that motion. I, I think that makes sense. I mean,
Okay.
Is it possible to hold off until Friday for this?
Uh, could you tell me why?
Um, uh, I,
What's gonna change between here and Friday?
Uh, well, I, I think that we should, you know, maybe, maybe Lakeville's really on board with this and wants to do it ASAP. So why would we offer somebody 90 days when we'd only need them for two? That's all.
For two days?
Yeah. Because if Lakeville is ready to regionalize with us or Berkeley, then we don't need an interim. Then we would, then we would be able to move forward.
Well, I, I don't have a major objection to it, except that uh, to do a regionalization like that, I don't want to rush into that. I would like to, you know, have time to sit down and speak to Lakeville and/or Berkeley. And, and get a feel for, you know, how this would work. Uh, we're not gonna do that overnight. And, uh, but we can do this today and have this person work for us for the 90 day period. And it, it, it would take the duress out of everything.
I, I, I totally understand your position. Um, you guys can move forward on it. Um, that's fine.
It could be a much shorter period. Do it. Doesn't necessarily have to be 90 days.
Yeah. Do you wanna do, start off with a 30 day period and then?
I don't know. Would she accept 30 days? I mean, that's, you know, like, let's compromise on 60 days.
Yeah, that, that sounds fair to me.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion for a 60 day temporary position.
Motion granted.
I'll just, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, pose.
Aye.
Uh, Slakka Grunwald?
Yes.
Slakka Matthews?
Yes.
Slakka Pacheco?
Uh, no. Next.
All right.
Hold on.
Yep, I'm still here.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, we have a resignation from, uh, Katrina Gonzalez from the Economic Development Committee and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, uh, she did say she would stay on as a recording clerk for the police subcommittee, uh, because we're so close to the end. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, can we just send her a letter of thanks? Because I'm gonna tell you, she was spot on and I'm gonna miss her. She was awesome.
Absolutely. Let's do that.
Uh, Slakka Grunwald?
Yes.
Slakka Pacheco?
Yes.
And Slakka Matthews?
Yes. And that's all I have on personnel board.
All right. Is everybody good?
Yeah. Can we discuss old business?
Sure.
Okay, uh, what I wanna talk about is, uh, council on aging. But before I go there, uh, the town clerk position, uh, what is our status on that?
We're actually gonna be discussing that with Jackie present at the next meeting on October 5.
Okay. All right. On the building addition. The COA has been working very hard, long time with the current building. That really is inadequate. And, uh, this project that was approved at the last town meeting uh, is just to refurbish and give them a little bit of extra room. And, uh, it's not a new building. And, uh, we need to get, uh, the first step underway, which is to get, uh, architectural drawing so that we can estimate the cost to make sure that the money that we've allocated, the $500,000 will be adequate. So, uh, can we give, uh, the COA permission to go out to, whatever the process is, and I'm not 100% sure what the actual process should be, but I know we need to get an architectural drawing. Did that go out to bid or what, what is the process, Lisa?
So I, um, I sent it to everybody a while ago. I'll send it to you guys again so we can all review it. Um, and, and just follow along with exactly what the process is supposed to be. There are some, there are some ways to move this forward. So I'll send that out to everybody again. We can't vote on it tonight, but I'll make sure that we send it out to everybody. So we're all on the same page and voting on exactly what needs to be voted on.
Okay. All right. And then can we get that on the next agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
10/5 is gonna be a busy night, Pete.
Okay.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion granted.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Matthews?
Yes.
Slakka Grunwald?
Yes.
And Slakka Pacheco?
Yes.
All right.
Good night, everybody.
All right. Bye. Thank you very much.
Have a great Friday morning.
Yep.
Next Friday morning. Okay.
This Friday morning.
Oh, this Friday?
Yes.
That's the next Friday, isn't it?
That is on Zoom, right?
Yes.
Okay. Make sure.
All right.
All right. Bye.
Sorry, you don't have to, Trevor, it's a half hour meeting. You do not have to be appropriately dressed or anything.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Bye.